Got it. Okay, good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six fifty-eight A M. This is the regular monthly meeting of the Oaks Public School Board being held by Zoom today instead of in the conference room due to the inclement weather. All board members are present at the Zoom meeting as well as Superintendent Sell, Business Manager Jepson, and a number of guests that all appear to be staff. So we'll start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Afghanistan, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next agenda item is confirmation and approval of the agenda that was in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Heimbach moves to approve. Is there a second?
Nagel second.
Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion regarding the motion to approve the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes. I'd like to welcome all visitors to our meeting again. As far as I can see, it is all staff members today. So thank you for attending our Zoom meeting. Next, we'll have the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular board meeting minutes, the review of bills, and public communication, which is a shout out. I'll have Mrs. Sell share with us the shout out. All these were in our packets, but for the benefit of the guests, let's read the shout out, please.
Okay, this shout out is to Mrs. Call. My daughter is constantly praising how kind and caring she is. She even dressed up with her at Halloween. I appreciate the continued kindness she shows towards others. Thank you, Mrs. Call, for all that you do for the kids at OPS. And she received this. I delivered it personally to her.
Good. And Mrs. Call is a para educator working primarily in the in the elementary?
Yes, it's she's a district para and it is Lynette German. We know her as Lynette German.
I know, I always have to think who that is.
All right, with that, let's consider approval of the consent agenda, which includes again the minutes and the review of bills. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? And if I have a motion and second, we'll take a moment to review the bills and ask any questions.
I'll make a motion.
Nagel moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Thorpe seconds. All right, the 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 pages of bills were sort of lengthy, so take all the time you need to review.
What happened in there is, you know, I changed up how I pay the credit card. And so it doesn't get a board report. Like the credit card doesn't come in a board report like their other regular accounts payable bills. So the credit card and then I had didn't have it in last month's bills. So you actually have two months of credit card bills in there. That's why it's so large this month.
And that's okay, but thank you for the clarification. All right, any questions about the bills in the consent agenda? Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of November fifteenth, the review of bills, and the public communications, which we were sharing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Oh. Hearing none, the motion passes. The next item on our agenda includes the regular agenda meeting items, the reports. We'll start with Mrs. Sell's superintendent's report, which has includes also the reports from her direct reports.
So maybe we'll just kind of dive into the snow makeup plans. Like front and center. If there's any questions on it, I guess I can tell you that I've already sent out an email to the teachers. We purchased something called Edg planet twenty-one and we're focusing on habits of the mind. And there's ten different modules on the habits of the mind and it kind of ties into our portrait of a grad. That was one of our things and our long-term strategic plan was using our portrait of a grad. We're finding that we aren't using it and part of that is, I mean, we've got all those things laid out, but everything that's underneath each of the core competencies, we we just don't have, we haven't done a lot of PD on it and that was one of our things that we wanted to do. So with the proposed make snow makeup days or what we're doing for snow makeup days, it gave us a chance to work on that habits of mind. And each day, so today, I guess I should say we represented it to the teachers and unanimously they wanted to do the makeup days on the day of snow days in order to keep up with our contract days. So today they're going to be spending, I the modules are about six hours is what it's going to be. So they're going to be required to do two modules today. And if they work on it already, I know I already got an email from a teacher today that's already done with one module. So she spent, you know, how many ever hours doing that already this morning? And if they don't get those finished by midnight tonight, they are will automatically be charged with another leave day. Or they can choose to take another leave today. And then I also have somebody that's ill that's probably going to take a sick leave today. But we we have those ten modules. They're going to be finishing those by the end of the year. But we're going to be allotting time during PD. So none of those modules will be expected to be done outside of contract time. But we're going to be allotting that time. But if today they take another leave day, they're going to have to make that up somewhere on their own time, those two modules. So eventually we'll get ten modules. Tara Steiner was kind of our guinea pig and she's done it. And she said that it's very good and she feels like it's the bridge to connect us to moving on with our portrait of a grad. So maybe we can go back to that makeup plan on that sheet. So we're on storm day number two. So the students, we won't do a makeup day because we have plenty of hours. And on that same sheet, I explained like how many days that we have extra. The elementary is over by over twenty-two extra days. The high school has about nine, almost ten extra days built into the calendar. So we've got enough instructional hours. We've got enough contact time. It's just the contract. If we have another storm day, we won't make it up school for the kids, but we will do another virtual storm day online with the same thing, two modules and having to do that piece of it. If we have a fourth day, we're going to have school on two twenty and then the teachers, that'll be their contracted because we'll be making that up. If we have a fifth one, you can see how we go down. We'll have it on four eleven, school on four eleven, and then six, we'd have school on four ten. And then the teachers would have to do a virtual PD. After we get those five days, then the teachers are just going to have to do virtual PD on storm days from then on out. Hopefully, we won't get that far, but I don't know. This week isn't looking very good, you know? I don't want to look too far ahead, but last night when I went to bed, I thought, okay, I drove home from the concert. Yeah, it was slick, but I was able to go about fifty, fifty-five, you know, and I thought, well, we'll be okay. But when I got up this morning, they had up the snow, they had up the wind. And there was no travel advice, so I just really felt like there was no way that we could have school and have that. And I've been talking to the snowplow driver and the county transportation people. So I knew that that probably wasn't going to get fixed over in Sergeant County, so. Anybody have questions on the snow day makeup plan? Does seem like a good option, you know, we're trying to, you know, work with everybody and still meet our contract and contact.
So I have a question, Anna. You mentioned that the modules are six hours, but yet someone already has it done and you expect them to do two modules in a day?
I'm sorry, I should have said that the modules are about three hours, three or three and a half. Those are the longest ones. Some are a little shorter. And the good thing about this institute is the teachers kind of have the agency to jump around. So you know, like some of the teachers have been doing habits of mind, so they might not enter at level one. They might want to enter at a different level because it would be more applicable at that time. I did ask everybody to do module one just because it's an introduction and you meet the people that are with habits of mind. And I think that one's supposed to be about a three-hour module. But we actually got signed up for yesterday. The teachers received it, so I have a feeling some of them maybe have kind of worked ahead, which is totally fine, right? You know, that's. But on average, what they're saying with this institute is it's going to take about three hours for a module.
Seems like a good plan. Hope it goes well.
I hope so, too. I think it will. This is giving us a chance, you know, to do some of the stuff that we don't get a chance to do and an area that we needed to work on, so.
Any other questions for Mrs. Sell on that topic?
Just the comments. I appreciate you getting the staff's input on on your plan. I really appreciate that.
I was, we were a little bit surprised because I thought, oh, they would want to just have regular storm days, but I get it, right? Get it over with so you don't have to give back all of those days in the spring, which we might end up having to do anyways if we keep getting storm days, but hopefully not, so. Just maybe I included in your packet the safety forum that we're going to be purchasing. The product, I think I kind of had talked about it last month, but we moved ahead and we met on the Navigate three sixty. Just to kind of give you the information on that, the center's going to go ahead. They're going to come and they're going to come to our school and they're going to map it. And they're going to do three hundred and sixty-degree mapping of all of the rooms. So heaven forbid, if anything happens, you know, we've got all of this stuff in place. The communication tool will communicate with the emergency services. I think it will be a lot better. You know, we've had concerns over how are we going to communicate with our staff if there's an intruder or bad weather, you know, that we're a little bit limited because we don't have intercoms in all of the offices. You know, when we run our drills, everything runs out of the central office, but we all know that that probably isn't going to be the way that it's going to happen. So I think this will give us a tool that we can use and will be a lot better for our entire system. The last thing I wanted to touch on, Sheila, we kind of the lunch bills. You can see our top ones, we're trying really hard to, you know, keep on top of those. Mackenzie sends home frequent letters, which probably everybody has gotten because if you, you know, I mean, it adds up pretty quickly. But if they reach a threshold of two hundred and fifty dollars, we enter kind of our final stage and Mackenzie sends home two letters herself. She contacts them personally. I contact the families and then if that doesn't work, then we turn it over to Shannon. And we're trying to seek to get some money out of it at least by sending them to collections. So we've gone through that with one family. We have a couple of families that we're probably going to be having to move ahead. But you can see just from those families that are on that list that that's three thousand dollars that we're in the hole. And, you know, with the cost of food and just the operations of it, that that's a pretty big chunk out of that part of our budget. So we're trying to stay on top of it. And we're giving people options like, you know, I the families that we've contacted, like just set up a payment plan with us, just help work with us, you know, to help us out and we send them free and reduced forms, but we don't get a lot of them filling them out for whatever reason. So we'll try to keep on top of it because, you know, I just don't want them to get so that they're so large that there's no way that they can ever be overcome, so.
And there's no point, which these children are being turned away for hot lunch, correct?
No, nope, they're still getting their hot lunch, yep. And maybe I'll ask you guys if there's something different you would want us to do.
I was just going to ask Mrs. Sell if you're doing any, if you're aware of any other schools doing anything differently with collections that is successful.
It's it's kind of across the board, you know, some schools just say, we don't even waste our time and others say, we can't run in the red. You know, that we our lunch program is not self-sustaining. You know, we have to have people pay their bills because we have to pay our bills. So some people just, you know, they set a threshold like us. Some schools don't serve hot lunch to kids that don't have their bills. They get a sandwich, but that's very few schools. So I didn't really feel like I wanted to go down that route unless, you know, you know, a direction from you all.
I don't think that's a path we want to go down either.
All right, anything else, Mrs. Sell, on your report or the reports of the other administrators?
You know, I don't think so. There's not a food service report, but Jer said she didn't have anything this month, so. No, I don't think so unless any of them, I see Greg and Brandon are both on here, so I don't know if they wanted anything or if you had questions for them.
Maybe want to highlight Dave Erlin's remark about bus driver needs for bus drivers.
Yeah, so he said he's getting the pinch of being short on them. We've reached out to people. We kind of came up there with Sonia had some suggestions about what we could do. We first wanted to get through training our drivers, you know, to see if that works for us, because if we don't have a way to train them, you know, it's kind of a mute point. So we are, we're kind of waiting until after Christmas and Dave said he'll work on doing that training piece of it. And I know Bob German is working on it because he's, again, he's our guinea pig for that one. And he said, it really isn't that difficult to do. It's just, you know, you have to pay attention because he said that, you know, when it's kind of the module thing, you do a module. There's an assessment. If you don't pass the assessment with a certain amount, you have to go back and redo the module. So they make sure that you do that, those pieces. And then Bob will have to do some driving with Dave. There's no set number of hours. I think I told you that before, but. Yeah, we're still short on bus drivers and Dave's, like you said, kind of fill in the pinch right now, but.
Okay, board members, did you have anything else that you wanted to ask about with regard to the administrative reports? I Mr. Mr. Beta and Mr. Dobitz, I guess, are on the meeting. Yep, so. Any questions? If not, is there a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
I'll make a motion.
Day moves to accept the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Heimbach seconds. Any discussion? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion passes. Next item is an update on the B legendary grant, the training. We have at least another proposed date to consider.
Yes, so Brittany Gandhi from Richland, the superintendent from Richland. First, they had thrown out the first weekend in February, but that's the negotiations, the school board negotiation seminar out in Bismarck, which that reminds me, I got to get that sent. And but now she's thrown out March third. That is girls' state basketball. And if I think probably if something would, if we would be playing in that, probably we would be able to figure something out. But there, March third and March fourth is what Brittany kind of pushed out to us.
Okay, so I don't know that we need any action on that, but what are your reaction, board members? I know for some of you, it's going to be hard no matter when we have it, but I think it's an important effort for us.
Well, the timing couldn't be any worse for me, but it's in between two big deadlines, but.
I I think we could should tentatively plan that. And unfortunately, if, I mean, fortunately, it would be great if we were in state girls' basketball, but I would want, I would want that noted that if if we go to that, certainly we'll we'll want to reschedule, which might not be that easy because we'll only have a week to do it. And the trainers are coming from out of state, so. We'll figure something out.
So would you like me to reach out to Brittany and Richland and just tell them that we would like to start like at noon on that Friday, go into the evening on Friday and then all day Saturday and we'll host them here? Is that kind of what we're thinking?
That would be my preference. Give it a try.
Okay.
Okay, so next up, we have financial reports. I got to figure out how to get down my screen here. Did we have that? In our packet? No, we don't. We don't have that in our packet. Did we get it by email?
Um, you know, I was looking at that last night and I'm wondering, I I'm not sure. I thought I had scanned it in, but maybe I had scanned it into Anna and it didn't get into the board pack or maybe I forgot to scan it to Anna. So I have it here in my hand, but that's not going to help you guys.
Okay, so we'll we'll just have to defer action on that until next month. So Shannon, can you give us a little update on where you are with our financial, with your your progress with with closing out months and so on?
Yes. Okay, so I have September closed out. I had Mrs. Lori Lyons from Lisbon come down one afternoon or one for a couple of hours. And she kind of walked me through some of the lingering questions I had regarding Esser and the coding and different, the budget, entering in the budget. So it was, it was very helpful. So I I got September done. We I worked in the balance sheet a little bit and I adjusted some things that I knew were incorrect. And I I made the balance sheet to where I was more comfortable with giving that to you guys. I started last night. I wanted to get October done and I have one hang up on October when I'll hopefully get that figured out today as long as Bismarck is open. And so it's just getting, it's it's, it isn't difficult. It's just finding, catch, playing catch up on to everything that it felt like I was behind on everything. So now I I think I've got, I've got the grants figured out. I've got the coding figured out. There's some stuff on Anna's desk that I worked on yesterday. That's about it, I guess.
Okay, that sounds great, Shannon. It sounds like you're making progress and feeling more confident than you were about three months ago.
Most definitely.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Jepson?
I just sent you the September, if that's the rights, the right documents I sent those, Shannon, maybe I sent the wrong thing.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Is that right?
Board members, did you receive that? I see it's the check reconciliation report.
Is that it?
Yep.
Balance sheet. Do you want to take a few minutes to review this and act on it? Or do you want to wait? I I think it'll be fine just to wait. Now we have it. You can look it over and send any questions to Ms. Jepson. And we'll act on this and hopefully at least October and possibly November next month. Maybe even December.
Nice.
Thank you for sharing that and we'll have a chance to look at it.
Sorry, that was probably my fault that I didn't get that sent. Thank you guys.
Okay, I'm writing defer to Jan. Okay, next is our school policy review, which was in your packet.
Okay, so I contacted school boards on the wording of the policy and those are required by federal law, so we didn't have any choice in that. So I just will need to approve this and I put the wording in there for what we need to do to.
Okay, so again, this is policy F F D, which is on the agenda for second reading, final approval, and it's on possessing weapons. And again, I think we deferred this from last month. There were questions. And as kind of expected, it it's all based on federal laws, regulations, and really for us to be in compliance, we can't do, there's, there's nothing we can do with this. So were there any other questions? If not, is there a motion? And I believe the motion was printed in Anna's detailed agenda. It would be I move to amend policy F F D as presented on second reading and that it become the official policy of the district. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thorpe moves to amend policy F F D as presented on second reading and that it become the official policy of the district. Is there a second?
A second.
And that was Day. All right, is there any discussion regarding the amendment and final adoption of F F D? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Thorpe.
Yes.
Day.
Yes.
Heimbach.
Yes.
Nagel.
Yes.
Mill.
Yes, the motion passes five to zero and F F D is adopted as amended. The next item on our agenda is policy review. And these are not, nothing that we need to take action on, but superintendent Sell desired to have these in the packet to highlight our committee responsibilities.
Yes, so I just included those and then I I explained it in my documentation for you just so that we remember, because we've got some committees that'll need to meet coming up. And I'll contact you those. Because I think I'm the chair on most of them. So just, just a reminder of those.
Okay, so wellness will need to meet. And did you say curriculum maybe also?
I believe curriculum, we have to meet once a year to yeah, we have to evaluate it once a year and commit recommendation.
Okay, so board members, if you're on those committees, you should expect to have a meeting in the coming weeks to fulfill those responsibilities. Were there any other questions or reactions to the policies that were included? Comments?
I have one. Just a reminder that all committee meetings need to have minutes, official minutes taken.
Thank you. All right, no action needed then on this topic. So we'll move on to old business, an update on removal of the stoplight at the intersection of Main and Highway one.
So does we, we went to the meeting. There was several of us that were there and it really helped to have the legislators involved. A big push on that, I have to say, was like, there were a couple of people. Drew Courtney was a big push on that. Kyle Courtney found out that Kyle's brother-in-law is actually the head of the DOT out in Bismarck, so that helped, you know, it's just you never know, there's connections that get built and those legislators, I think, are going to be key in helping us keep that. And I, they didn't say one hundred percent absolutely sure, but those of you that were there, it sounded like, at least I thought it sounded like we had a pretty good chance of keeping the stoplight if it's up to them, because they sit on the finance committee and they hold the the file for whatever the profile for the that piece of the finances. So I thought it was, it was good. I felt like possibly we have a chance. They're just keeping their fingers crossed that nothing major goes wrong with that light for the legislative session, so. I don't, Ron and Sunny were there and let's see, but Monica, I don't remember who I was there, so.
No, I had a prior meeting that I had to be in.
And maybe someone, if you have anything to add, ladies?
I thought it was interesting to note that there, there are other communities of similar size and even larger than us that are, that have a similar challenge. And so it's, I think it'll be nice that we're, it's just not us. So so other communities can help carry the ball and make the effort to lobby the legislature to get done what we need to get done. So we may be calling on board members and the public to reach out at some point to help contact legislators that they know that should support whatever we need to support. So anything else? That's all, or any other questions on the stoplight? If not, we'll move on to school board student members presentation. I see we do have a couple of students on with us. Shall I turn it over to Mr. Miller if he could introduce his students and have them make a presentation for us regarding, again, to, as a reminder, we spoke about having a student representative on the school board and adopting a policy. about having a student representative on the school board and adopting a policy in that area.
All right, thank you. Yep. Uh, one of the things that we've been doing in POD is, um, we've been tracking, excuse me, how a, how a bill is made. It starts with an interest group and they go through the process of buying out the interest. Um, and then they had to write an amendment to our state constitution or our national constitution, depending on which, how big their, their scope of their bill was. Um, so we started out with the, uh, these two ladies, uh, Cadence and Lakin. They had an interest on, on, uh, having their voices heard and then student engagement. Through the project, they had to, make a poll that they distributed to, um, some of their classmates. Sometimes, uh, some of you teachers on, on here probably got an email from me saying, hey, would you take this poll? Uh, just kinda depending on what it was. So these ladies, I think they had seventy-eight respondents to the poll, so the information they're gonna provide you is, is, um, fairly vast and, and probably a fairly good representation on, on the way the student population at Oak's Public Schools feels. A couple of things that drove their decision to do this was, uh, in their time at Oak's High School in particular, uh, they've gone through a whole bunch of changes and a whole bunch of, of things that have, uh, it started one way and then it got manipulated and manipulated again. Uh, and, and through all these things, even though they've been well reasoned and, and, uh, probably appropriate or, you know, agreed upon by the teachers and whatnot. Um, the student voice in that, and some of those decisions have been lacking, so, uh, some of the things they cited were, you know, it started with pandemic and the pandemic is the pandemic and you can't really do anything with that. Um, at one point in their high school careers, they had Flex Mod. Uh, now they no longer have Flex Mod. At one point, uh, we had, when we went to our seven period bell schedule, they didn't have a homeroom. And then they had a homeroom with their class and now they have a homeroom with a mixed class. Uh, the grading sta- scale started ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty, uh, then it got changed to include A pluses. Um, now there's talk that it's going to be standards-based grading, so there, there's a whole bunch of changes there. Um, the student lounge, which was part of Flex Mod where students could go if they had a free period or they had some time off and they didn't wanna leave the building, um, to study, relax, whatever that thing might be. Um, and then the other one, that, uh, they're probably the most passionate about and probably the thing that, that drove the, the whole thing is the homecoming changes, um, with no class Olympics and some other things, but, um, I'll stop talking now and let them talk for a little bit, so. Cadence, Lakin?
Okay, so, um, our amendment that we came up with, is that all schools in North Dakota must have a student representative seat on the school board, so that no student shall in any stage of their schooling have their thoughts and comments ignored by the administration and staff.
We chose this topic because we found that most students feel that the administration does not listen to the school body, and from feedback from the survey I sent out, sixty-two percent of the students, that responded felt that the administration does not listen to the problems. And then the other half that said they did listen, um, eighty-eight percent said that they don't fix the issues. And then eighty-seven percent of students feel that the administration does not make, makes decision without consulting the students.
Um, so for our amendment, we are proposing it to the state government. Since we only have feedback from our surrounding area, we just thought starting with our state, government would be best for what our amendment is. Um, we said that we'd want our amendment to go into effect in the beginning of January, so that, um, when school remains after Christmas break, there wouldn't be times when students would be ignored or misheard.
How the government would enforce it? The student representative on the administration, if it feels that they are ignoring their thought, they would explain to the school board, and if the school board doesn't do anything about it, then it would go to the state.
The effect that we hope this has, we want everyone to have a say in what happens in the school environment. Um, after amendment would be passed, we don't want the administrators to con- control everything without consulting in student opinions. We hope this would allow students to have a say in what is being put in place for their schoolwork and activities. And we found that this would also make students feel more comfortable and confident in addressing their teachers and administrators. So that's all we have for our presentation part. So, yeah.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Um, a month ago, uh, the board, uh, had a report from the three, three members of the board that attended our, North Dakota School Boards Association Conference in October. Um, board member Heimbach brought to the board an idea that she had encountered at the convention, uh, regarding having a student representative on the, uh, a non-voting student representative, on the school board. Uh, have you seen that proposal? Have you girls seen that?
No, we haven't seen anything regarding like student engagement with the school board.
Okay, um, and what I'm hearing you say, uh, a lot of the topics that you've mentioned, um, I think sound like they are administrative topics rather than, school board topics. And I'm wondering, uh, what are your thoughts? Okay, so what, what you shared with us today was a class project regarding a, uh, a proposal to the state legislature. And that's great, but we're not the state legislature. So I'm wondering from the two of you girls, how do you think that this, your, your research could, um, be applied, uh, in, at Oak's Public Schools?
Well, I think, like you said, I think putting like a student representative seat on the school board could help. I mean, I know some of the stuff we said isn't, like, the school board isn't fully involved, but if we don't have like any seat or any spot, we're getting shut down. So I think like if we did have, a spot on the school board, it would like create better chances for us to have a say.
And I'm also familiar with, um, the state superintendent of public instruction, Superintendent Basler, has a, not, she has not only a student cabinet, but she also has a prin- principal's cabinet. Uh, she has a, a cabinet of family representatives. So not, a- as another possibility, what would you think about, either our superintendent or our principals having a group of, student representatives on a cabinet or advisory council to them?
I think that would be nice too, cuz then you have more than just one person seeing it all. You have a group of students that can, see what the administration sees, but then also what the student sees and you can get more feedback.
And, and regardless, if, if, if there was to be a student advisory board to administrators, or a student representative on the school board, how would either of you propose, or envision that the student or students be selected?
I would say to pick the, you have to pick like more outgoing ones, ones that'll actually feel like they can say something, but also the ones who, like, I guess, good students, the ones that like, s- can see both sides of the problem and not just their problem.
Okay. Cadence, did you have something to add?
Yeah, sorry. Um, I was also gonna say, I know that there are like the ambassadors for each grade, um, that got picked however long ago. I think, um, you could start with them to, cuz obviously they have been trying to be a voice for a while, so I think that could also work starting with, the ambassadors or, yeah.
Okay, do other board members have any questions or comments for the students? Are either of you one of those ab- ambassadors?
We are not.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
How do the ambassadors get chosen?
Can anyone address that?
Yeah, I can address that. The ambassadors were chosen. Yes, sorry. Excuse me. The ambassadors were chosen, um, going on three years ago. Uh, we have a process that we need to, um, kinda put into place, uh, this year going forward to make sure that we're kinda restocking the shelves, if you will, on ambassadors. We are a few, a year behind, I believe, on that. So, uh, this spring, we will definitely have to, restock our shelves with students.
So what have the ambassadors done to this point? I guess I'm not familiar with that, so I'm just.
Yeah, so the, the group of students that were picked, um, a couple of years ago, were picked because we needed to get some student voice on some PCBL feedback. Um, we've asked them to help us with our site visits. They do quite a bit, for us when we have people come visit our classrooms. Um, they are kind of like our tour guides. Um, that's kind of the, been their biggest role.
Okay, thank you.
And how did you choose those, Mr. Dobitz?
The original group of students were chosen. Um, I believe we chose two students from each class, that were already part of either student council or National Honor Society, and then we were able to, um, choose some other students, um, kinda by, to be honest, Mr. Beta and myself and Mrs. Sel just chose some students, cuz we needed to start the group. The process that we have set in place, the ambassadors helped us create. It involves getting, um, kind of some support from other students and teachers, uh, that will kinda, uh, what's the word, not nominate them, but agree that they'd be a good, uh, person to be in that role.
Thank you. I, I remember hearing some discussion about the selection of ambassadors, I think, at one of the PCBL convenings that I had with the district design team and I, I was impressed with the, suggestions, um, that the teachers that were there had suggested that, um, adding, uh, certain students because, uh, maybe they were a little bit more quiet, or they, they, they just represented a, a broader range than, um, what you might initially think, but that they also thought, based on those teachers' interactions with the students, that they would be willing to, step up and represent another view. So, uh, I thought it, it seemed like they were making an effort to get a pretty broad view of students. So in your process of questioning all the students, um, did you ask them how they would like their student representative, to be voted in onto the board or how they would like to be selected?
When I sent out the survey, I didn't talk about a representative. I just wanted to get, the, what they feel right now. So then, I told them if they didn't listen to give me examples of what, they were talking about, but I didn't go into the representative side.
Okay, anything else, uh, for the students or for Mr. Miller or any of our administrators regarding this topic? So I, the, this won't be, uh, anything that we'll act on today, but I would look forward to hearing in, uh, the coming, you know, perhaps our next meeting, what the thoughts are and what direction we might be going with this. Whether we're looking for a student board representative, uh, a policy was, a, a sample policy was presented. That might be something that we need to look at again, or maybe, uh, maybe the, the right answer is to go more using our, uh, ambassadors and/or student council and others, uh, as more advisory, and put them in advisory roles to administrators or maybe both. So, good topic. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the staff, staff spotlight, and today we are going to have a presentation, from our two counselors, elementary counselor, Mrs. Franks, and, high school, junior high counselor, Mr. Wentworth. So take it away.
Good morning. Uh, Mr. Wentworth and I were asked to kinda speak to the board today, um, about some of the things that we are currently doing in our counseling department. Particularly like in regards to like mental health. So I thought I would just kinda start off with talking about what our kind of core curriculum that we use, when I go into the classrooms for, uh, counselor. And what we've been using for the past five and a half years is our second step, which is our social emotional learning curriculum. Um, it's got four main units in it, uh, that focuses on, um, emotional management, like recognizing our own feelings, recognizing feelings of other people, um, and giving them ways to, uh, how to control or try to regulate those strong emotions when they have them. Um, along with that, it goes into like that empathy and compassion when we're able to recognize other people's emotions. Um, it goes into problem solving. It breaks it down into what to use as step, um, to, think about the problem, think about the consequences of, uh, the possible, uh, solutions you could have and then picking that best one. Um, so we've been using Second Step for the last five and a half years. Last year, we did, uh, the digital version, cuz we had a grant through Cheyenne Valley, I believe. Um, and that was basically the same core content, but it, no, it introduced a, um, different unit on, growth mindset, so that's not a new, uh, term for our students, so that was nice too. I think we just purchased that again, the, and it's nice cuz they're a little bit different, but, you can kinda pick and choose and which lesson maybe works best with, uh, that particular age group. So I know we're getting into using that and Ed will probably talk a little bit more about that as far as, uh, I think he's trying to get that going up into like with our junior high again, but for them, again, it's not anything, the second step, curriculum's not new to them cuz they've had it. Um, as far as like beyond that base core curriculum that, I've started to integrate or started, I kinda piloted with Mrs. Lynch's class. It's a program called, uh, Close Gap, and Mr. Wentworth had actually, um, introduced me to that from one of his, uh, fellow SRCTC counselors that uses it with her junior and high school students and, what that is, is basically just a check-in with the students and they go in and, excuse me, they go in and they kinda check like how they're feeling today for, I know I've only kinda seen it from like the lower elementary side. Um, and they go in and they have a couple of different like emotions. It's their planet, like planet emojis. Um, and they can check how they're feeling. They can check how their energy levels during that day. Um, gives them some, if they're kinda low, it might give them some, uh, tools or strategies to try to maybe up their energy level. Kinda get them out of that little bit of a funk and then they can check in with how they're doing. And what that does is then it sends kind of a email notification to us saying, if they're kind of lower on that, like they're feeling down or whatever it may be, it gives us, uh, email notification to say, hey, this student could use some of your attention and interaction today. Um, and then, uh, they can report things like maybe they're having peer issues or troubles at home, or maybe they didn't get breakfast that morning for some reason. And that allows us just to check in, but, it's a free, it's a free thing to use, so, but I really like about it is though, is like I said, uh, Mrs. Lynch's classes tried it out now for, probably a month, a little over a month maybe, but we can go in and I can see like, the students' emotions have been up here, but now all of a sudden like, they've been down here for like the past week, so that can kinda trigger us to be like, maybe something's going on with the student and allows to check in even further. Or we, so it, it gives us that data, which is very helpful, that visual data. Um, I'm getting, I, last week I introduced it into, uh, Mrs. Beta's kindergarten class and it's been going pretty well, I believe. Um, we're trying, like I said, it's my goal. Um we're trying, like I said, it's my goal to have it in all K through six, but it's a lot of time consuming to try to get them plugged into the system. Um with the younger elementary, I have to go around and kind of enter all that stuff into their iPad and save the page and get them logged in. Um the older students will be able to do it, but I'm trying to figure out how I can do that without creating that classroom. But I I believe it's going pretty well. I think it's just created um that relationship with their teachers on a different level when they're feeling kind of down and out. Does anybody have any questions on any of that?
Any questions? Sounds fascinating.
A little Mr. Wentworth kind of talk about what he's doing.
Um so a lot of the curriculum that we use uh up in the seven through twelve is through Are You Ready? Uh it's actually one of the the um best programs in the country. A lot of um uh a lot of people that I've talked to in my education have have uh taught, have said the uh career development part of Are You Ready is probably the very, is the best uh in the country. And so it's a little clunky, but uh it'll it allows you to do uh everything from uh interest inventories, uh card sorters. Uh uh a whole bunch of uh interest profilers uh to where you get to see what kind of career you would be interested in. Um it is, it also goes with you after high school. So they can, they can get access to their uh Are You Ready stuff um through college and adulthood. Uh anybody, actually, anybody in the state of North Dakota can, I believe, can get access to it and use it. Um another uh component to it, uh which I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna be working on in the spring, is to bring a uh there there's a company called Compass that um that what they do is they make business profiles. And uh the business puts their profile up and says like they want, they're willing to do job shadows. Uh internships, uh come to speak to schools, those sorts of things. Uh but then if they have a job that they want to uh apply, they can put that into this uh into this compass program on Are You Ready? And the the students who have done their interest profilers, it'll say, hey, here's a job that all the stuff that you've done says you would be really interested in doing this. Uh and so it like connects the students to the business world, and so it's something that I'm looking at um at uh doing in the spring uh with the Oaks community. Um and and so that's one component of it. The other thing is, we just uh uh bought the Second Step uh digital. Uh I talking with Mr. Beta, we, I wanted to kind of build off of it uh rather than just going seven through twelve. Uh the seventh and eighth grade have done se- uh Second Step, and so kind of going from Second Step uh using that in seventh and eighth grade for uh SEL curriculum. Uh I can then uh in ni- next year, bringing it, bring it to the ninth grade and tenth grade, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade and build it up that way uh rather than um go into the nine through twelve. Uh right now, the company that does Second Step doesn't have a nine through twelve program. They're building it. It's about two years out, two to three years out of it being built. So this way, it kind of helps to uh it helps build that uh language from kindergarten all the way through that's common uh across the board, uh gives them common strategies so that when there is a moment uh where they're in a in a situation and their their uh emotions are high, they can use some of those strategies because they've they've heard it from multiple times over and over again, and then it's a choice of whether they use it or not, right? Um so that's kind of in the curriculum. Uh before the nine through twelve, I'm supplementing with uh things from various uh other counselors that I get and um through other state departments as well. Uh looking at different lesson plans that other state departments have, and I've been pulling uh from the from the standards that we have there. Uh the other thing that we did uh this fall has been, we've implemented the Stop It app. And so uh we, we went to the um uh the Community Mental Awareness Night uh at Growing Small Towns. And uh we had a table there where we talked about the Stop It app. Uh we then implemented it throughout seven through twelve. Uh it's a, it's a reporting system for a whole bunch of things. Uh it can be for bullying. Uh I see something uh like, hey, I see a student without a coat. Uh is there some way that we can help this student out? Uh it does it all anonymously. And so uh it, they can, uh they download the app. Uh parents can download the app as well, and they can make anonymous uh reports as well. Uh and so then it comes to us and the administration team of uh Greg, Brandon, uh Jamie and myself, and we look at that incident report, and then we look to see uh who takes it. Uh whether it's a counselor uh issue or if it's a administrative issue. Uh and so that's kind of what we've done. Uh it's been, we've been, it's been going really well. Uh we were worried that some students might turn it into a he said, she said, or it might just blow it up with a lot and misuse it. And we'd have to like take um use uh like uh have the user like be blocked. Um but it, we've had like seven, six cases open, and they've all been for um the issue, the issues that we need them for. Um able to allow us to have the conversation uh about, hey, there's an issue going on with bullying. Uh we can have a conversation with them uh through a message system that's anonymous. And to get more information about that, um they're able to take snapshots uh and download it into uh the incident uh folder, and then what else is there? Um and then another good thing is it has a resource page that uh if it's outside of school, they have a hotline directly to a counselor if they uh need to talk to somebody. Uh it also has uh hot uh resources that we can put in there as well. And so we've put like the food pantry and um and then uh link two on one as well, because that's a really great resource that we have. And so that's uh kind of where we're at. If um if you'd like more information about it, uh I can definitely uh send out uh, you can go to the Stop It. Uh I I think it's WWW dot org, and you can uh set up your own account. Uh it's just going to saying, going to the school. And uh you can see kind of how uh the whole system works. It's really slick and easy. Um it's, there's also a broadcast, so uh you know how Marine blasts stuff out uh on the app. We can do that as well. So uh there's a lot of uh really good tools with it. Um and then the last thing that uh we wanted to bring up, Jamie and I uh is uh what kind of things we still need. And uh one of the things that we've been talking about uh this this school year has been uh looking at getting a mental health counselor within the school. Um it is something that uh other surrounding schools have done. Uh they found a connection between the uh business world and the school district and has built in uh built in a contract where uh the school district uh gives them a room and space to be able to meet uh students. Uh our job as school, as professional school counselors, uh we we have a lot of on our plate, but one of the things is uh doing uh long amounts of counseling uh is kind of, we refer out. Uh we might do eight session and eight, like eight sessions at the most with a student, but then uh if that issue is something that uh they need more counseling on, we refer out to a outside source. Um with that, there's there are families that have the access and the means to be able to uh go to Jamestown, Valley City, Aberdeen, Fargo uh to uh see a counselor or a therapist. Um but there are some families that might not be able to afford that. And so having uh a mental health counselor uh within the school district, provided by the school district uh that is right there in the school uh could be very helpful uh for our stakeholders, our community, our parents, and our students.
Thank you. Board members, questions? Uh Mr. Wentworth, you mentioned the Are You Ready program, and you mentioned that it's accessible, not just by students, but by anyone in North Dakota. Um I, I, I have been on that. Um you know, that's administered by the State Department of Career and Technical Education, which I am on the board for, and I remember um perhaps seven or eight years ago, looking that at that and saying, oh, some of those career videos are really outdated, and um I think you are right. It has improved greatly in recent years. Um my concern uh with regard to how we use it in Oaks Public Schools um is that I don't feel like our parents are aware of it, and we're not, parents aren't made aware of how their students use it. Um have you, and I know this is your first year, so um how would you envision students and parents using that together to uh do their interest inventories and explore their career possibilities in in higher education?
Um one of the things I'm looking at doing is, uh I was talking with uh Mr. Brockman about this, too. It's about uh my com- my communication out with parents and kind of trying to find a systematic way of doing that. Uh and so that would be one way in which I can uh kind of bridge that gap between students and parents. Uh and then uh to to add, to say like, hey, here's uh what you're, what we've been doing in the classroom, and now you guys can get online and you can like go through it as well and have these conversations uh at home as well. And I, I, that's one way. Um I'm open to any other ideas as well. Um it's just uh it's just sitting down and brainstorming different ideas on that. But I take that uh piece and uh will definitely put some more thought and ideas into how I can to bridge that gap between the two.
Yeah, so I I've long thought that we get report cards that say how, what our students have done during their classes, but I I don't remember getting anything about, well, here's what my student has done, and are you ready? And how how their interest inventory turned out, and it seems to me like a report card or a, you know, once or twice a year, parent-student counselor meeting, which of course would be very time-consuming, but perhaps time well spent. Any other questions or comments about this very thorough um presentation by your counseling staff? Uh a thought I had about the Stop It app and the bullying reporting. Um we have a bullying report form and a bullying um uh reporting policy and process also on our website for a bullying report to actually be official, shall I say? Ultimately, it can be reported um anonymously. But is there not an issue or a problem if it's anonymous? I- is that a problem with investigation, Mrs. Sell, in in our experience?
Yes, it can be, because when we have to do the investigation, you know, we've got to go to the sources. Um so once it goes to Jamie and Ed, then Jamie and Ed kind of have, they're they're the first step, and then they kind of do some investigation on that piece, but that, you know, I, and Greg and Brennan, you guys can chime in, too. But if there, it's anonymous, it makes it very tough. You know, we can kind of get to the, but if we can't get to the exact details, that makes it really tough.
So if if it's anonymously reported, the the investigators, the counselors or administrators can investigate and address the issue, say, on behalf of the alleged victim, which is probably necessary. But then with regard to if, say, a parent says, well, I want that kid punished. Well, or the the alleged perpetrator, I want them to be punished. Well, it's pretty hard to do that piece of it. If you can't get the um, you know, the, i- if the the anonymous, the report is anonymous and you can't follow up with those people.
Yeah.
There is a messaging system, so when they, when an incident report comes in, and let's say that incident report is very vague. We can message back with that anonymous reporter to get more information and details to help us with that investigation. So more specifics of what is happening, what is being said, what is being done? Where is it taking place? How often has it happened? So there is that opportunity, even though that report comes in, that we can still get more information to help us with that investigative.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Thank you again for your excellent presentation. This has been very good. That brings us to item F on our regular meeting agenda, New Business, the first reading of the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, which was in your packet. Or is in your packet. Mrs. Sell, do you have uh comments for us?
Um just kind of what I said in the packet, that this is just our first draft, pretty much taken right from the Southeast Consortium. We um at the beginning of the school year, there's an added PD day in there. We kind of heavy loaded there because we were possibly gonna try to partner with the Southeast Consortium. Again, we've kind of bowed out of that the last couple of years, just simply because we've been so focused on PCBL. But um hopefully we'll be able to jump in. I don't know if we'll travel over to Wapton or what we'll do, but we'll figure that out as it gets closer. Um but it's almost exactly the same as as last year, you know, just the uh the dates this year, the parallel dates, so.
And again, I'm seeing um now in for twenty twenty-two, twenty wait a minute. Oh, May, on the calendar that I'm looking at now in the packet, May says May of twenty-three, but that should say May of twenty-four, shouldn't it?
Um, oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, there's a good catch. I'll change that. Yeah.
Um so what I was going, where I was going was that, so in May of twenty-three, this current school year, it's the first year that we will have graduation a week before Memorial Day, which was when I first got on the board, that was something some parents, some families really, really wanted. So we'll see how that goes, but that's the same proposal for twenty-three, twenty-four, is that graduation will be um on the nineteenth of May, which is a week before Memorial Day.
Hmm.
Okay, are there any other, anybody notice anything else on the calendar that should be changed? So we'll be, we'll be acting on approving uh as a first reading, the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, but uh with that typographical correction of May twenty-four rather than May of twenty twenty-three.
Does the board, I'm sorry, does the board want me to look at making a calendar where we graduate a week later? Because like you said, we haven't seen it or still go with it. You know, I know one of the things that I've heard is that we don't have very many breaks in the middle there, but part of that is because we are graduating so early, and so then that doesn't allow a lot of space in there for.
In the center there, Anna, it says twenty twenty-two, twenty-three calendars.
Okay, thank you. I'll fix that. Those are the things that.
We'll probably have breaks.
I like them.
Go ahead, Thor.
Let's see, I like the looks of this, this one with that. On the nineteenth, um I guess my question would be is on the the start dates, I mean, is that the is that the latest we can start, then also the twenty-third?
Well, um yeah, I, in order to get our days in, we yeah, in order to get our days in, we would need to have that unless we would push back graduation a little bit later than that. You know, if we went to Memorial Day for graduation.
Yeah, no, I don't, I personally don't want to do that. So I just wanted to ask the question.
Unless, I don't know, you know, unless, okay. So right now, the, with we have 187 contract days. So I don't know, you know, with negotiations, if that'll change or what will come. You know, I, this is just the first reading. So if things change, you guys, we can always go and amend it, you know, if we need that, we need to add on the end or whatever, we can always change it. This is just the first reading.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? Uh, so I'm seeking a motion to approve as a first reading, the 2324 calendar with the typographical corrections that we've noted. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Nagel moves to approve. Is there a second?
No, second.
Thor seconds. Uh, that was Thor. Is there any discussion, any additional discussion on the calendar for 2324? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll. Oh, you're, you're muted.
Thor.
Yes.
Nagel.
Yes.
Day.
Yes.
Time Buck.
Yes.
Meal.
Yes. The motion passes five to zero and the 2324 calendar first reading is approved. Mrs. Sell has noted some items for a future agenda. Want to touch on those briefly?
Sure. So I just heard back from Ryan Sigurud from Michael J. Burns, the architects for the floor. And it sounds like they're going to start advertising for bids on January 26th, and then the bid date will be February 16th at 2:00 PM. Uh, will be that, and I don't know how flexible that is. I would think it would be, he just asked if that would, would work. So I confirmed that with him. Okay. Got a little bit, I, I think if the first go around, it was like about 300,000 for the flooring, for the science floor. They're guessing about $400,000 now. So, um, I've given him some, a, a budget of four to five to see, and I think he's going to do two separate bids. But as that gets closer, he'll do the bid for the science floor and then the windows, you know, telling us like how much it's going to cost for the north side, the south side, the east side, the west side, some of those bids. So we can kind of decide if we want to go further in and how we want to do that. So that'll be coming up. Business manager evaluation. Sonya had talked about that is one of the things I'll let you.
Yeah, I, I, as I contemplated that a little bit, I think that what I might like to start by doing is for the January meeting, just have Ms. Jepson do a self evaluation. And then we would follow up then in the spring or even, even in the summer, after the closeout and everything, do a board evaluation. Does that make sense?
We don't have a set date that we have to have that one done by?
No, there is no requirement in law that we have to do it at all, but I think it's good practice and we expect all staff to be evaluated and except board members, of course, we never want the board members to have to be evaluated. We're evaluated at
We're evaluated every three years.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. And so I, oh, go ahead. Uh, bus bids, Shannon has put out the bus bids and she's received a couple of them and our deadline, Shannon, that's Friday, right?
Did I? Oh. I don't remember off the top of my head. What days?
I think, I think we had said Friday would be our deadline on those.
Yes, yes.
So we'll bring that in January, the bus bids for acceptance or whichever you want to do.
Okay. Anybody else have an item for a future agenda? If not, we'll highlight our next regular meeting as scheduled for Tuesday, January the 10th at 7:00 AM. And then looking ahead to February, that's a career tech ed month, and we typically try to meet at the career tech center in February and we would likely have our annual presentation from CTE director, Mr. Spellerberg and Mr. Brockman. Any conflicts or concerns about those two meeting dates?
So the 14th of February is a convening date. So and Greg and I would be, so if we could look at doing something a different day. I kind of threw out a date there, February 10th at 7:00 AM.
February 10th would be a Friday?
Yeah.
Um, can, have you followed up with the CTE staff to see if that might work for them?
I have not. I thought I would get a date and then I'll throw it out at them and see if that works for them since we've got two months on that.
Okay. Yeah. Let's keep that in mind as a potential deviation from our normal second Tuesday meeting in February. All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Thank you for attending by Zoom and for getting this together. I thought the Zoom meeting went very well. But we had good presentations in this manner. So I guess it's always better to do it in person, but I thought this was very, very productive. So with that, and it's only 8:15, I will declare this meeting adjourned at 8:15 AM. Thank you very much and have a great day.